It is past seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. I will call to order our Tuesday, March 14th meeting of the common council. Mr. O'Connor, would you lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Lee's, will you call the roll?
Mr. Air?
Present.
Mr. Boyce?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Sparks?
Present.
Ms. Wiles?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the executive session memorandum from February 28th.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the executive session memorandum from February 28th. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Approval of the minutes from our February 28th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve our minutes from the February 28th meeting. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Approval of the minutes from our March 3rd work session.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our March 3rd work session. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Approval of tonight's agenda.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor raise your right hand. Nine oh. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present? I do not have any. Senator Baldwin, I see he is in the room. If he has comments that he'd like to share from the legislature.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, appreciate the opportunity to talk. It's been a while since I've been in front of you. I'm also not dressed appropriately tonight. I've been sued all day and every day, and it's kind of nice to come home and balance my Senate duties/work duties/honeydo list, and I'm in the middle of the honeydo list. We are, as you know, halfway through the session now. We just started our second week. We're beginning in the Senate to hear House bills, and they're killing our bills over there. So we have started down the path of committee meetings, and we're moving along rapidly. We're hoping to end session around April the 26th. That's the big idea, anyway. So this year, as you may know, is a budgeting year, and so I'd like to think that the majority of our bills this year are focused around finance and less around social justice. Not that some of that isn't necessary. It just seems that this is just a little bit more appropriate for the legislature, I think. So a couple of statistics that I wanted to give to you and for all the citizens listening. The number of bills introduced in the Senate was 484. I think it was triple that or so in the House, so in the range of 1,500, 2,000 bills. A lot of legislation. I had a group of little kids, third graders from Noblesville, visit me, and out of the miles of babes, you know, they asked me how much I made, where my hair went, and how many laws are there. And I thought about it for a second, like, just too many, sweetheart, too many. And I showed them the big tome of legislation on my desk, and it's amazing. But luckily, all of those 1,500 great ideas didn't make it through the halfway point, and I'm guessing won't make it. Before, the number of bills passed was 164. Thirty-four percent of the introduced bills made it to the House after the vetting process. Number of bills that were passed with unanimous support, and you don't get this necessarily in the media all the time, 91, which is 55% of the bills, were unanimous. And 150, or 91% of the bills had bipartisan support, which is a great testament to our ability to work together. And the number of the bills coming to the Senate are 178, so they pared down theirs pretty greatly. And without going through all these bills that are alive right now, I'll just say, from a Senate perspective, we were really kind of focused on three things. One of them was some level of preparation for tax relief. One of them was my bill, Senate Bill 2, which is now law. The governor's already signed that, which provided a workaround for small businesses to kind of level the playing field between large and small businesses, and it was a pass-through entity tax workaround. So complicated, but good for small business if you own an LLC or NSCorp or something like that. Travis Holden and I authored Senate Bill 3, which is laying the groundwork for potentially eliminating personal income tax. That's a mouthful, and so we're going to study it. It's not missed to me that there'll need to be places to backfill what might happen if we lose Noblesville's local option income tax. And so right now, the majority of what we're hearing from our collective constituents is property tax relief. There are a variety of bills that are floating around, many of which are just not workable. They don't have a way to backfill the loss. Everybody wants to talk big about eliminating things until you look at it from a big picture. So we're tabling a lot of those in the Tax and Fiscal Committee until we have an opportunity to study this as a whole. There may be a few of them that sneak through. So that's the first thing, is really tax relief. The second thing has been to try to lower the cost of health care for Hoosiers and at the same time, lower our mortality rate. And so a variety, or just a battery of bills came out of the House and the Senate with an effort to do that. There's a lot of opinion about how do we empower county health departments and the state health department and others, and so we're working through all those opinions, and hopefully we'll land in a good spot on how we spend some money that we have in excess to try to reduce Hoosier mortality rates. And then lastly, well, and along those lines, is how do we reduce the cost of health care? Big animal, a big machine, as you know, Councilwoman Wiles, it's easy to talk about, you know, eliminating pharmacy benefit managers or, you know, lowering costs with some broad swath, but there's always second and third order effects, you know? And so that's another complicated issue that we're trying to tackle right now. But, you know, trust us, we're the government, right? And then lastly, providing additional access to mental health services. I think we're recognizing that mental health is a huge issue. A lot of recidivism at the police department, the jails, county jails, you know, in our hospitals, in our schools. It's just a nonstop onslaught of people struggling with mental health. You know, I suppose if I had an extra half billion dollars to spend, and I was the only person making decisions down there, I'd bring back two or three state mental health hospitals to kind of deal with those that are majorly struggling. I think that's the big issue. We have folks that have been just kind of turned loose out there, and we don't have the facilities to be able to handle them. So a lot of good folks here from our committee in Noblesville trying to help with that. And so with that, I'm happy to answer questions. I apologize, I haven't been in in a couple months, you know, as we've been in session. But wearing jeans or not, I wanted to kind of address you today, and I'm honored to have the opportunity, Mr. President.
Thanks for being here. Any questions for Senator Baldwin?
Not a question, but a comment. As a corporation owner, I appreciate the little break. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I met with my accountant the other day, and we're holding back till you get your formulas figured out to make this work.
Yes, sir. Do they know that, Mr. President?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go get that list taken care of.
Sir, yes, sir.
Moving on to council committee reports. First one is from Mr. Davis, wastewater committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met Thursday, March 2nd. I was the only one available to make the meeting. Jonathan McGraw talked about the proposed new sewer rate for the drinking water utilities, Indian American and citizens, that when they treat their water in the backwater situation, they put a lot of water into our system, and he's trying to get a handle on that, and it hasn't been looked at in quite a while. And that's one thing he's working on. And the other thing is they're looking at the new billing rates. It's going very well. And they're looking at a new purpose to include an update on the non-sufficient funds fee, which is outdated. And those two things are what we talked about, and that's it. It was a very quick meeting. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Davis? If not, we'll move on to Parks Board.
Yes, Mr. President. Parks Board met March 1st. It was also a rather brief meeting. As far as golf goes, a couple of things. They're actually going to open the courses, I was told, tomorrow. There was somewhat of a delay in getting them open as opposed to the other courses because of them wanting to preserve the greens. It was real rainy, and they were real soft, and they just felt that extra traffic would just really kind of hold back what they've been working on. And they're also continuing to be able to maintain and keep improving the golf course. There was some talk about a new app that's going to take place for the golf course. Users will be able to download. And also for the new golf carts that will be coming, there's some new technology that will be on them as well. As far as recreation goes, all the activities are doing very well. A lot of them are booking out. Even summer camp, at the time, the meeting was 78% full, so if you're considering kids' summer camp, I would definitely get ahold of them. Also, they wanted to stress that they are definitely looking for employees, full-time and part-time, and they say it's definitely a great place to work. They do hire some 16-year-olds, 18-year-olds and above as well. If you're interested, just look on the website, and I'm sure they'll be glad to have you. That's about it.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We'll move on to finance. Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met March 9th. A good meeting, primary items, the resolution that's on our agenda this evening for the equipment lease purchase that comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the finance committee. Good news is, I think we kind of snuck in under the wire from a rate standpoint, so I'll let Mr. Spalding talk more about it. We had a review of our cash investments. As you recall, we're working with First Source Bank in South Bend. It's been helping us manage some of our liquid assets and trying to earn a few dollars on those. And we went through the statements, looked at the types of investments, but most of it's treasuries and AAA's, Federal Home Loan Bank, all those names that we're all familiar with. So generally, with rates going up, we've been able to enhance a little bit of our return, so that's been good. And Mr. Spalding's going to do a quarterly report that'll be a little more concise and be a little more digestible for all of us. So I kind of revel in the numbers, but I think it'd be easier if he just puts it on one piece of paper for everybody. And I think that was the bulk of our discussion, that the claims do come to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of the claims.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the claims.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the claims. It's a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Miscellaneous number one, council to consider Resolution RC-16-23, a resolution concerning the acquisition of real property. Mr. Hughes.
I am here before you this evening to discuss a resolution that is before you for the acquisition of the authorization to acquire three parcels or portions of parcels of land, greenfield, over Wheeler Ditch. This area, just to orient you, is between Waterman Drive and Arbor Grove, the Arbor Grove neighborhood. And there are three parcels along this road that we need to acquire to repair the small structure. During a survey of the small structures, the engineering department rated this one in a poor quality, and it's a structure that needs replaced. And so I'm happy to answer any questions, but we would recommend approval of the resolution so that we can proceed with the next phase. All three property owners have been notified of the interest to acquire this property, and I'm told that Andrew Rodewald has a meeting coming up next week with at least one of them. So they're aware, and we're proceeding to see if we can work this out amicably. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hughes?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'd move we approve Resolution RC-16-23 as submitted.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution RC-16-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Miscellaneous number two, council to consider Resolution RC-17-23, a resolution authorizing the 2023 capital equipment lease purchase financing agreement. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and controller. And this resolution was referenced briefly by Counselor O'Connor because it was discussed at the finance committee meeting. I'll get into that detail in a second. But in a very general sense, this is an exceedingly routine thing. This is for the annual citywide capital equipment lease, which we've been doing every year since I've been here and even for a few years prior to that. And the only thing that's a little bit different this time around is the authorization process that we're using for it is a resolution. So if, you know, any of you longer-serving council members are saying, "I don't remember seeing this come through in this way before," it's because it hasn't. And on advice of our city attorney, we're doing it this way, and you'll see it this way in the future. And basically, what you're doing is establishing the approval for the parameters under which the financing will occur, and it's similar to other things you do, et cetera. the financing will occur, and it's similar to other things you do at sets, you know? You can borrow up to this amount of money for this period of time for not to exceed a certain interest rate, and that's basically what it does. And actually, we have already, we're simultaneously processing things. We've already gotten bids for the financing, and as Counselor O'Connor said, got fairly fortunate, came in with a five-year financing for just under 4 percent, so 3.99 percent, which was good, given the current rate environment. But this is just approving the overall concept of doing that. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
Ms. Wiles? I would move that we approve Resolution RC-17-23 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution RC-17-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I know. Thank you. Miscellaneous number three, council to consider Resolution RC-18-23, a resolution creating an advisory council on disabilities. Mayor Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. First of all, thanks to those who joined us earlier tonight on the tour of the Village of Federal Hill. Appreciate that, and your spouses who joined as well, too. You know, that tour speaks to a broader vision of our community in that we are working every single day to be a great place to live, work, and play. And we are intimately focused every single day to make sure that we are a great place to live, work, and play for all people who call Noblesville home. And that's why it's an honor tonight to present this resolution, which is, as Mr. President said, RC-18-23, which creates an advisory council on disabilities. And that's the resolution in front of you. We are so fortunate in Noblesville to be home to some amazing organizations. Janus Development Services, over on the west side of town, has just been an incredible community partner for decades, seeking to really be on the leading edge of workforce for those with special abilities, and also really dive into the transportation issue in our community, you know, all the way to Sam's U, which I know some of us were at a grand opening for their new facility here just recently. And they are doing work every single day to better the lives of all 70,000 residents, but certainly those 8 percent of those individuals in the city of Noblesville that have one or more disabilities. And so in honor of March being National Disabilities Month across the United States, we're seeking to form an advisory council on disabilities. And this was not done alone. This was done in consultation with some of those great partners. I know I have some great lion chasers staring at me from behind here, and I have to recognize them, Jennifer Sells of Sam's U, Tammy Wonniger even crossed the city boundary in Westfield representing Noble of Indiana, and then Yolanda Kincaid, I don't know if I'm not in the audience, but is a great executive director at Janus. They all really were helpful in guiding us in this. And I also want to give a thanks to City Councilor Cecilia Koblo of Fishers, who has been passionate, for personal reasons, about this topic and helped form this council in Fishers, and has helped spearhead that in areas of Lawrence and Westfield and Carmel as well. So this advisory council really is aimed at giving guidance to the city's ADA, current ADA plan that we have in place, that we are federally mandated to have in place, but it would be great to have a group of folks around us giving advice and guidance on that plan, also giving us guidance from a city perspective and from an organization's perspective on meaningful employment opportunities for individuals in our community that are faced with some of these challenges. And then they'll work with the city on different grant opportunities around this space and around this topic going forward. So we're honored to stand before you to present this resolution. I want to thank Matt Light, who, per usual, comes up, I have an idea, and he turns into a memo in about 17 seconds. And he did that once again with this, and not only memmoed it, but rallied the troops and got everybody around a table to hammer this out and lay this forward in front of you tonight in recognition of March being National Disabilities Awareness Month. So we're excited to get this launched and get this going and get these folks really codified in a formal way to give us some great advice, but then also work. This is meant to be a community-led organization to really give some great guidance as we move forward and continue to be a more diverse and welcoming community going forward. So that is what is before you. I want to thank, again, those partners who helped with that, Matt Light and others, and happy to take any questions that you have about this resolution.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I don't have a question. Just a statement that actually our lieutenant governor was in town last evening. The Hamilton County Republican Women's Group hosted the lieutenant governor, who was highlighting March as National Disability Awareness Month, and she is really dedicated and passionate to making sure that we're providing the resources to the members of our community who face these challenges.
Yeah, absolutely. And she was, it was a great presentation full of facts and figures around this topic, which is quite impressive.
Any other questions?
Is that a motion?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Resolution RC-18-23 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution RC-18-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I know. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Miscellaneous number four, council to consider Resolution RC-19-23, a resolution opting into an opioid settlement. Mr. Light.
President Smith, members of council, Matt Light, Deputy Mayor, thanks for your support of the previous resolution. The resolution in front of you is for participation in what's the third significant settlement involving national opioid litigation. As you know, there have been a number of claims that have been pursued by cities, towns, counties, and state governments across the country against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and pharmacies relating to some of the impact that those drugs have had within communities. And so there have been a lot of efforts leading up to this settlement. Again, this is the third significant one that's been reached, tentatively pending a critical mass of participation by units across the country. So what is pending for review is a $20 billion global settlement with CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, and Allergan. And of that settlement, Noblesville, again, if the numbers are there in terms of participation, would be in line to receive about $367,000. So this resolution would authorize the mayor to sign on to those settlements and move forward with those being finalized. We don't have the specific numbers of how much would be received, but these numbers would be, these amounts would be paid off over a period of years, appears up to 15 years for those amounts to be paid off. There'll be a restricted fund for some of the amounts that are received that'll have to be used towards opioid treatment programs, and then a smaller portion that can be used for any governmental purpose. So we've reviewed this in conjunction with the national council that's handled it and would recommend that you approve this resolution for participation in the settlement.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Light?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Resolution RC-19-23. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution RC-19-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous number five, council to consider acceptance of conflict of interest disclosure. Mr. O'Connor?
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. I just, on an annual basis, disclose that I am an employee of BMO Commercial Bank, and the bank does provide banking services to the city, but I benefit in no way, shape, or form economically from that, but I at least want to disclose it and make it, put it on the record.
Thank you very much. We have a motion.
Mr. President, I would move to accept the conflict of interest disclosure. Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the conflict of interest disclosure for Mr. O'Connor. It's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I know. Council comments. Mr. Eyre.
Yes, I'd like to thank the mayor and congratulate him on taking part at the Purdue Road School session today with Governor Holcomb and the Indiana Department of Transportation. It's always good to get Noblesville's story out there, and it couldn't be a better place than with the state officials that were there, so thank you.
I wanted my hand up.
I did like the governor's boots a little better than your shoes, if you want to take note of that.
Different strokes for different folks.
He's got the best. He's good.
Yeah, all right. Any other comments?
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
For the council members at your place, you have some stickers and some coasters that are the beginning stages of the bicentennial celebration for here in the city of Noblesville. I think at the next council meeting, I'll try to have a more formal presentation of what the bicentennial committee is planning to do and how we're partnering with our wonderful organizations here in Noblesville to help celebrate the city's bicentennial, along with Hamilton County. More to come later.
Free swag.
Very cool.
Not exactly free swag. There will be, there will be an opportunity that if anybody would like to purchase bicentennial logoed items, there will be an online store, but I don't have that link to you yet, so again, in a couple of weeks, we'll have that for you.
Awesome. Anything else? Or your turn?